Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August the 9th legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. The council has just come out of a closed session, the purpose of which was to discuss a discussion regarding the appointment of an attorney to handle special projects or conflicts. The session closed at 5:55 PM. At this time, I'd like to make an announcement in case of an emergency. Please exit the chambers in an orderly fashion, make a right-hand turn, and go down the stairs. If for some reason that staircase is blocked, make a left-hand turn and then a right-hand turn down the end of the hallway to the stairs down there. Please do not use the elevators if there is an emergency, and if you need special assistance, please ask us and it will be provided to you. With that, I'll call on Pastor Bruce Glisten of the Allen Memorial Baptist Church for our invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you and we praise you for the life that you have given each and every one of us. We praise you for your creation and we praise you for your gifts you show us every day. Father, as we come here tonight to meet as a council, Lord, we pray for your wisdom and your direction in every decision that is made. I praise you and I thank you for every member that is represented here and their dedication to serving you. And, Lord, I pray that as they meet and as they deliberate, that you guide every decision. Lord, we thank you for the city of Salisbury and, Lord, we praise you for this beautiful place that you have given us to live. And we pray, Lord, that we will be good stewards of your resources. Again, we just ask you to guide and direct us in everything we do, say, and think tonight and every day. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. At this time, please rise and join me in pleasurable allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake. Mrs. Gregory. Good evening, Ms. English.
Good evening. On the consent agenda this evening, we have the June 21st, 2021 work session minutes, June 28th, 2021 council meeting minutes, July 6th, 2021 work session minutes, July 12th, 2021 council meeting minutes, July 19th, 2021 work session minutes, and the July 26th, 2021 council meeting minutes.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3117.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? I heard Ms. Blake first.
Yes.
Good evening, Mrs. Lance.
Good evening, Council. Before you, is Resolution Number 3117. It is a long one, so bear with me. Resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury authorizing the City of Salisbury to issue and sell two separate series of its general obligation bonds pursuant to its authority described herein. Such series of bonds to be respectively designated City of Salisbury Tax Exempt Public Improvement and Refunding Bonds of 2021 and the City of Salisbury Taxable Refunding Bonds of 2021. The proceeds of the sale thereof to be used and applied for the public purposes as provided herein of financing or reimbursing costs of certain projects described herein that are authorized by Ordinance Number 2675 identified herein and currently refunding in whole or in part certain principal installments due on the 2010 tax exempt bond, the 2013 tax exempt bond, and the 2012 taxable bond identified herein, together with accrued interest on such refunded portions financing or reimbursing certain costs of issuance of the bonds and to the extent provided herein, funding interests on the bonds. All as further described herein prescribing the form and tenor of the bonds and to the term and conditions of the issuance and sale thereof at the public sale by solicitation of competitive bids, including the substantially final form of the notice of sale and others details incidents to the issuance, sales and delivery of the bonds, authorizing the mayor to determine certain matters provided for herein in connection with the sale of the bonds, authorizing and approving the preparation and distribution of the preliminary and a final official statement in connection with the sale of the bonds, and any supplements or amendments thereto, designating a bond registrar and paying agent for the bonds and providing for an agreement with such entity, authorizing the preparation, execution, and delivery of a continuing disclosure undertaking pursuant to Section Rule 15(c)(12) and conveniating to provide continuing disclosure relating to the bonds, providing for the appropriation, disbursement, and investment of the proceeds of the bonds, providing for the imposition of any taxes necessary for the payment of debt service on the bonds, pledging the full faith and credit of unlimited taxing power of the city to the payment of such debt service, providing that debt service on the bonds also may be paid from any other lawfully available source of revenue, making or providing for certain covenants, determinations, and designations relating to the tax exempt status of the tax exempt bonds, authorizing certain actions to be taken in connection with the prepayment of any portion of the 2010 tax exempt bond, the 2013 tax exempt bond, and/or the 2012 taxable bond, providing that the provisions of this resolution shall be liberally construed and generally relating to the issuance, sale, and delivery, and payment of and for the bonds authorized hereby.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3117, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is five to zero to approve Resolution Number 3117. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2676 for the first reading.
Second.
Ms. Jackson and Mrs. Gregory. Good evening, Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the council. It's nice to see you again. Ordinance Number 2676, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 5.28 Fortune Telling of the Salisbury Municipal Code to amend the requirements for fortune telling, whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendment, whereas the City of Salisbury desires to amend Chapter 5.28 to update the requirements and process by which fortune telling is permitted. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury that Chapter 5.28 of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. Chapter 5.28 Fortune Telling. Section 5.28.010, Definitions. For the purpose of this chapter, the following terms shall have the meanings indicated. Fortune telling means the telling of fortunes, forecasting of futures, or reading the past by means of an occult, psychic power, faculty force, clairvoyance, cardimancy, psychometry, phrenology, spirits, tea leaves, tarot cards, scrying, coins, sticks, dice, sand, coffee grounds, crystal gazing, or other such reading, or through medium chips, seership, prophecy, augury, astrology, palmistry, necromancy, mind-reading, telepathy, or other craft, art, science, talisman, charm, potion, magnetism, magnetized article or substance, or by any such similar thing or act for pay or compensation. Section 5.28.020, License Required. It is unlawful for any person to engage in the business of fortune telling within the corporate limits of the city without first obtaining a license therefore as provided in this chapter. Section 5.28.030, Application for License, Contents, Filing. Subsection A. Each applicant for a fortune telling license under this chapter shall file in duplicate with the Director of Business Development a written sworn application therefore signed by the applicant showing the following. The name and a description of the applicant, the applicant's legal and local address, the address of the place where the business of fortune telling is to be carried on, a photograph of the applicant taken within 60 days immediately prior to the date of the filing of the application, which picture shall be two by two inches showing the head and shoulders of the applicant in a clear and distinguishing manner, the fingerprints of the applicant, the names of at least two people, one known personally to applicant and one known professionally, who will certify as to the applicant's good character and business respectability, and a statement as to whether or not the applicant has been convicted of any crime, misdemeanor, or violation of any municipal ordinance, the nature of the offense, and the punishment or penalty assessed therefore. Subsection B. The Director of Business Development shall retain and file one copy of such application and shall forward the second copy thereof to the Salisbury Police Department. Section 5.28.040, Investigation by Salisbury Police Department. Upon receipt of an application as referred to in Section 5.28.030, the Salisbury Police Department shall cause investigation of the applicant's business and moral character and of the facts stated in and the contents of such application to be made as it deems necessary for the protection of the public good. Section 5.28.050, Fee for Application. Subsection N. At the time of filing an application as referred to in Section 5.28.030, a fee of $100 shall be paid to the Director of Business Development to cover the cost of processing the application and the requisite investigation. Subsection B. The license fee required to be paid at the time of the issuance of any license under this chapter shall cover a period of one year from the date of issuance. Subsection C. No rebate of the fees shall be made to the holder of any license once issued under this chapter. Section 5.28.060, Disapproval of Application Non-Issuance of License. If, as a result of, excuse me, if, as the result of the investigation as referred to in Section 5.28.040, the background or business responsibility of the applicant for a fortune telling license under this chapter is found to be unsatisfactory, or the facts stated in or the contents of the application are found to be untrue, the Salisbury Police Department shall endorse its disapproval and its reasons therefore on the application in question and return such application to the Director of Business Development, who shall notify the applicant that the application is disapproved and that no license will be issued. Section 5.28.070, Appeal from Disapproval of License. Hearing. Any person agreed by the action of the Salisbury Police Department in the disapproval of a fortune telling license under the provisions of this chapter shall have the right of appeal to the city administrator. Such appeal shall be taken by filing with the city administrator within 14 days after notice of the action complained of has been mailed to such person's last known address or written statement setting forth fully the grounds for appeal. The city administrator shall set a time and place for a hearing on such appeal and notice of such hearing shall be given to the appellant in the same manner as provided in Section Section 5.28.080, Approval of Application, Issuance of License. If, as a result of the investigation as required in Section 5.28.040, the background and business responsibility applicant for a fortune telling license under this chapter are found to be satisfactory and the facts stated in and the contents of the application are found to be true, the Salisbury Police Department shall endorse their approval on the application filed by the applicant in question and return such application to the Director of Business Development, who shall upon payment of the license fee prescribed in Section 5.28.50 issue fortune telling license to the applicant. Section 5.28.090, Recording of License Is Issued. The Director of Business Development shall keep a permanent record of the issuance of all fortune telling license under this chapter. Section 5.28.100, Information Required on License. Each fortune telling license issued under this chapter shall contain the signature and seal of the issuing officer and shall show the name, address, and photograph of the licensee, the purpose for which the license is issued, the amount of fee paid, the date of issuance, and like the time for which such license shall be operative. Section 5.28.110, Duration of License Renewal. No license shall be issued for a period, excuse me, no license shall be issued for a shorter period than one year and/or longer than one year. Renewals of licenses may be had for additional one-year periods upon compliance with the same terms and conditions and upon payment of new license fees provided that the city administrator reserves the right to refuse to grant any such new license. Section 5.28.120, Revocation of License. A fortune telling license issued under this chapter may be revoked by the mayor after notice and hearing for any of the following reasons. Fraud, misrepresentation, or false statement containing the application for such license, any violation of this chapter, conviction of any felony or misdemeanor involving moral turpitude, to include but not limited to child pornography, theft, first-degree sex offenses, fraud, cruelty to animals, robbery, kidnapping, knowingly permitting any person other than the licensee to practice fortune telling in the place of business of such licensee and/or to sustain complaints for the public within a calendar year. Subsection B. Notice of the hearing for revocation of a fortune telling license issued under this chapter shall be given in writing setting forth specifically the grounds for revocation and the time and place of hearing. Such notice shall be mailed, posted prepaid to the licensee at the address at the place of business of such licensee at least five days prior to the date of her hearing. Section 5.28.130, Exhibition of License. Each licensee under this chapter shall exhibit their fortune telling license under this chapter in their place of business. Section 5.28.140, Unauthorized Practice of Fortune Telling Prohibited. It is unlawful for any person other than the person named in a fortune telling license under this chapter to practice fortune telling under such license. Section 5.28.150, Reporting and Recording of Violations. The Salisbury Police Department shall report to the Director of Business Development all convictions for violation of this chapter, and Director of Business Development shall record the reports of violations thereof. Section 5.28.160, Sign Regulations. No person holding a license under the terms and conditions of this chapter shall erect or post any sign advertising said business on the premises. Regulations of, oh, that appears to be a typo. Regulations of the violation of, excuse me, regulations in violation of the Salisbury zoning code on the premises. Man, who wrote that? Section 5.28.170, Violations and Penalties. On and after the date of the final passage of this chapter is unlawful for any person or persons to practice spiritualism when not practiced by recognized religious bodies or ordained ministers inside the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury, Maryland without a license. Any person or persons violating any provision or provisions of this chapter shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof before any court of Wycomico County, Maryland shall be $2,500 or imprisoned for not more than 30 days or both for each such offense. May be further enacted and ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the ordinance shall take effect upon final passage. I'd like to note procedurally for the council that those items that were underlined are new language that have been added to the code. Those items that are struck are items that have been deleted, and then with respect to this ordinance being considered for second reader, I would respectfully request that you allow me to prepare in a rat sheet identifying each and every amendment that is going to have to be made to this ordinance in advance of second reader.
Fine. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
I do have questions. So there is no fee for this license?
It's $100.
$100.
I see. It's kind of like, it's like striked out in mine, so I didn't know if it was...
Yeah, you got to look at the strikeout.
There was a, some of them were a little off. I don't know if that was switching from Word to PDF. I think it's kind of, a couple of them missed a line.
Yeah, mine's like stricken through it, so I didn't know. But that's fine. That was my only question.
Okay.
Absolutely. The modifications to the existing section are not clear to the eye.
Okay. Any other questions?
My only question is that towards the end, it talks about it's unlawful for any person to practice inside the city limits. You know, does that include people who practice for their own benefit in their own homes? That's not very clear in the language there, to me, anyway. That's how I...
I also read it as if they get ordained, they don't have to file.
Right.
They don't have to file for a license. Because if you read this as a whole, as I mentioned previously, this is a religious liberty thing. So some of the things that they're doing as spiritualism is no different than what churches offer. So we're, and we've put it in here. If they're ordained and they do tarot cards, they don't have to get a license.
But then...
I mean, there'll be one person that'll fight it and they'll win.
If I may. There is a depending clause that is doing a heavy, heavy lift in that sentence. In effect, what this is intended to mean is that it is unlawful for any person to practice fortune telling if they are not licensed. It is, however, not unlawful for that individual to practice fortune telling if they are an individual who holds some type of position recognized within religious bodies, for serves as ordained minister.
I understand that, but the nature of spiritualism, a lot of them independently practice, and that's what I'm concerned about, is people are going to object to that because that effectively is a restriction of, as he was saying, religious liberty. I mean, I understand the purpose of this is when someone's using it as a business, but to me, just the way I'm reading it, it looks like if they are practicing for their own benefit in their own home, it makes it look, that's kind of how it reads, so just correct me if I'm wrong there.
I think that that's what I gathered.
Yeah, that's, that's...
As long as they're not doing it for other people outside of their immediate family, I don't think there's an issue. Mr. Mayor?
I was just going to say that, in my opinion, when I hear that, the concern, the thing I would caution us to stay away from, and I realize some of this language has existed for a long time and we're editing it, but what I would caution us to stay away from is simply that the city playing any role in deferring to and subsequently kind of determining who or what is an ordained minister, I think we want to be careful of that. That's up to the churches. That's not up to city government.
Protected by the First Amendment.
Can I suggest...
Yeah. If there's a way to tighten that up and cut out some of that language, it puts us in an awkward role.
I would say, it says it is unlawful for any person to practice fortune telling, palm reading, and spiritualism when not practiced by a recognized religious bodies or ordained ministers. Well, I mean, if they're practicing in their home, they may not be ordained, so can we add possibly the words "for profit" or "as a business venture" for that? I think that would make it a little bit cleaner and more apparent as to what this is.
The profit's the focus, right? Not the, you know, and the taking advantage of people, right?
Right.
You know, I mean, because what we don't want to do is say that, you know, a startup church in somebody's house, you know, a church plant is not acceptable, but, you know, and the work that they're doing versus, which is just territory that this legislation is not intended to get into at all.
Right.
You know, legitimizing or delegitimizing one religious institution or one church because it's small and starting versus a bigger one.
Again, why have the law at all because we're encroaching in that territory?
But not for everybody because the...
But it's for profit.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
For profit is not the same as a church. Once you say for profit and once you're making a living from it, it is not a church.
Again, I grew up a pastor's kid, and my father and my grandfather made a profit as pastors because that's how they made their living. I'm just saying, it's, it...
I don't think that's the same thing. I think, I think when you, when you're a minister or a priest, you're provided with...
So we're getting into the area of spiritualism, which is the same thing. I'm just saying, we're trying to regulate whether it's for profit or not for profit, but it's still a religious activity. We're encroaching on the First Amendment.
Then how do we protect the individuals who go to the non, how should I say it?
I've seen the same thing happen at churches. I've been in churches where some of the things that, I've seen it happen. I'm just saying. So whether it's in a church, whether it's somebody going to a fortune teller and getting fleeced, I've, I've, I mean, it's, I don't, I mean...
Can I make a suggestion that, Mr. Sullivan, if we put the "for profit" term in there, do you think that that would cover our discussion now?
I do. I also think that there are some provisions here with respect to some edits that perhaps can be stepped back. I think that I was present when the individual brought to the attention of the council during public comment some of the archaic hurdles that are involved in obtaining a fortune telling license because of what's provided in the code. I think that it's very clear, if there's one thing I take away from this ordinance, it's the definition of fortune telling. It's expansive, but it's also specific. And I think that if you do address it from the standpoint of it being operated as a business operation, a for-profit business operation, whether out of your home or in a commercial space, it shouldn't matter. They should have to get licensed. And simply put, when it comes to enforcement, if I may, I would humbly suggest that the enforcement is effectively a dichotomous one. It's a situation in which an individual is operating a fortune telling business and they are not licensed, or alternatively, they are operating a fortune telling business and they are licensed. One is enforced as a penalty, the other is approved as a license. So I would also, I would humbly suggest that the council tabled this for first reader and set the regular, set it for work session, but that would be my suggestion. That's certainly your prerogative because what I would like to do is make sure that you guys see it in a clear sense so that you are all making sure that the decisions made and the approvals granted are ones that match your constituents' intent, but that is just my humble suggestion.
Well, let me get a sense of the council now because if we put in, as the suggestion was, to put in "for profit," that can be done before the second reading without bringing it back to the work session. So is there, is there a consensus that if we put the word "for profit" in, then we could leave the rest of it go as Mr. Sullivan has stated?
I think that works for me.
I'm looking. It says on and after the date of the final passage of this chapter, it is unlawful for any person or persons to practice fortune telling when not practiced by a recognized religious bodies or ordained ministers and the corporate limits of the city.
Counselwoman Jackson, if I may. Section 5.28.020, is it the bottom of the first page? I believe that that has the language that you specifically want to see in that section 5.28.17.
5.28...
Line 27, on page one.
Here is what we don't really want to defend, and bring in this religious, religion.
Right, yeah, I see.
Like a cat fight. No, I don't, that's what I don't want. That's exactly what I don't want.
Just for a reference, it says, this is 5.28.020, it is unlawful for any person to engage in the business of fortune telling within the corporate limits of the city without first obtaining a license thereof as provided in this chapter. So I think Michael's recommendation and taking what you all have been saying to include that in the last piece, make sure that's consistent, will clear this up.
Yeah, why not? I mean, there's a lot in there that could be taken out and just put that line in and then whatever the, whatever the penalties for not getting a license, I would say take all of that out that says anything about being ordained. I think that just...
Less is more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that...
Because when you go into that, that just, that's really the...
That's a good...
In lieu of eliminating a whole chapter... In lieu of eliminating a whole chapter, I'll accept that.
I think that's good.
All right, so that, so that, I think we got, we have a resolution. We can go ahead with the vote on the first reading. And then at the second reading, if the verbiage isn't like what we want, then we handle it then. Okay?
Sounds good.
That's what we'll do. So I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2676 for the first reading. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero to pass ordinance number 2676 for the first reading. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
At this time, I'll call for anybody who has any public comments. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to make a public comment? I see.
Casey.
Hi, Casey.
Hi, friends! I'm sorry, I'm home with kids, so there may be screaming in the background. First, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the thoughtfulness and respect that you gave to your discussions. I, I know this is a very sticky topic, so I really appreciate, I appreciate you guys. Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, just because I couldn't hear Mr. Sullivan very well. And I wasn't sure, it didn't sound like the items that he was reading were what I have read before from previous emails and agendas. So I just want to kind of confirm a couple of things. Is that allowed during public comments?
You can do it within four minutes, yes.
Okay, we'll be super quick. So I, I heard him mention that there needs to be a sign outside of the door where it's going to be done. I thought that there was no, like, specific location that you had to name in the license. So does that mean, like, if you're doing a pop-up in a salon, you have to have a sign outside the store saying that it's being performed inside?
It says.
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, please.
So with respect to the sign regulations, it says that no individual holds a license. So no individual who is a licensed fortune teller can erect or post any sign advertising their fortune telling business on the premises if such sign is in violation of the city's zoning code. So in effect, it's a, a, a negative way of phrasing, you are permitted to display a sign if provided it is in compliance with the City of Salisbury's zoning code.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'm sorry, I think I, I didn't hear the "not" in there, and I, I thought we were supposed to display a sign. So that's where I was really confused. I did have another question about the licensing process. Is there a license that needs, like, paperwork that needs to be filled out in person? Or do we come to Mississippi with all of our information pre-typed out?
Yeah, there'll be a form.
Casey, yeah, this is Jake. Can you hear me?
Hey.
Hey, how are you?
Are we not to that point yet, or am I jumping the gun?
Yeah, we haven't developed that yet, but we will, as with any application. Once, once the, the law is created, we will subsequently adopt a form.
Because then my follow-up question to that is, if you paid the $1,000 when you, or I'm sorry, thank goodness, $100 when you fill out the license, and then all of the paperwork goes to the police department, how long does the police investigation typically take? And if it's like a three-month process, then you only have nine months out of the year. That's. I was a little confused about that part. Or is that another question for later?
No, I can take that if that's okay, Mr. President. Casey, that depends on how much trouble you've been in your life.
Probably not that much.
No, it depends, but typically it doesn't take that long. You know, I think at times it's been a matter of days, but it really depends.
Like I said, I just, I haven't had one before, so I, I didn't know. And I just didn't want one of my, my friends that's going for this to, like I said, have to pay for it and then not be able to do anything for like three or four months. But I, that's all the questions I have right now. But I will review and check out if there's any other ones. But again, thank you all very much.
Casey, just following up on that question, the, when you get your certificate, your license, that's when the clock starts. So you get a year, no matter what, however long the, the background check will take. But we'll make sure that we expedite this.
Okay. That's where I was like, do you, do I pay? And then all of a sudden, like, I've lost like three or three months out of my, my year that I paid for, kind of thing. So thank you for clarifying. I really appreciate it.
Welcome. Anyone else on Zoom?
Jared.
Jared?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council. I just want to extend my appreciation to this legislation that's being taken up and share our organization's support. I would be remiss if I did not thank Casey, Nicole, and Councilmember Gregory for educating both our organization and me personally on this topic, how it affects people both spiritually and, of course, a few small businesses in the community that do look to do this in the future. I know this isn't the biggest policy question that's ever been taken up here, but it is a very important one, and I'm glad to see that the council is moving in the right direction on this and talking about, as someone who is a part of a religious minority myself, it is always nice to hear bodies speak about religious minorities in a polite and respectful manner.
Thank you, Jared. Anyone else on Zoom? Anybody in the room like to say anything? Mr. Zimmerman. You do have four minutes.
All right, I'll, I'll make it brief. Colin Zimmerman, Coastal Association Realtors, Wacomico County resident. Inventory's still bad, as we were talking prior to the council meeting. I've got rumors that the council's considering some great options as far as zoning goes, as well as other ways to accessory dwelling units and other ways to affect encouraging of infill development. So anything we can do to hurry that along would be wonderful. And of course, we are a willing partner to help out in any way possible. So you have my phone numbers.
Great, thank you, Colin. I also would like to tell you that the Planning Commission is very busy right now with new home projects.
Well, that's, and I know, I know downtown's too busy. I know, I know you guys are busy, no, no doubt. There, there is a sense of urgency by the industry of striking all the irons hot, of how do we, how do we accommodate the need? We're, we're way down in inventory, way down in number of houses nationwide for the need. And how do we, how do we affect that before waves of eviction moratoriums and other things come to a head?
We're with you. Thank you, Colin. Remarks for the good order. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Why don't I start right there? So we are trying to be not only quick but comprehensive. So we're looking to propose some policy changes for the council to consider that will address this housing shortage as quickly as possible. Right now, in the approval pipeline, there are about 1,700 units, which, you know, would on average equate to about three times that many new residents, which for us would be, you know, five to 10 years worth of population growth if you look at the last five to 10 years. But all things take time to actually come to fruition. And not everything that goes through the planning process and gets approved is built. So clearly, we are still, I think, behind the curve in terms of getting projects initiated and starting things. But every day, every day, we are being contacted by developers, we're being contacted by property owners, we're being contacted by planners and architects and people who have clients that want to build and want to invest. So there, there's hunger out there and there's interest. But it always comes down to, every conversation comes down to, well, I have to make the numbers work. So we, we've got to have those conversations. We're working on some proposals. And again, we want to be comprehensive. So anticipate that we'll bring some proposals forward very soon for your consideration. There are, there are some projects hanging in the balance right now, waiting for a, you know, well, if, if the, you know, if our annexation agreement said this, we could do it. If it said that, we couldn't. If our, you know, approval said this, we would. If it said that, we wouldn't. So there are some immediate concerns that need to be addressed there. The second thing I want to note, just while we're on this topic, is that many of you will know the name Stan Markowski. Stan has built, Stan and his team and his partners have built thousands of apartments and homes in Salisbury, including the most recent homes on the east side of town, and some that have just gone through the Planning Commission. I think he was just down here getting a couple hundred homes approved on both Pemberton Drive and Johnson Road area. That being said, his, his partner and cousin passed away today. And his partner has been in Salisbury many times here, building apartments and houses. So I just wanted everyone to know that and wanted to, so that you could share your thoughts. And we can also give his contact information to you if you want to share your thoughts and prayers with his family. So next, I want to share something that I haven't shared with the people that will be affected yet, but I thought now would be a great time to do it. So I want to thank the members of the council who volunteered for, their name for consideration for appointment to the Maryland Municipal League's Standing Committees. And I wanted to share those. So selected for participation this year on our standing committees include Councilwoman Gregory, who is going to be on the Engagement Committee. So thank you for volunteering and thank you for being willing to serve and represent us in engagement and outreach for the organization. Councilwoman Blake, who is going to be on the Hometown Emergency Preparedness Committee on HEPA, thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve. And let's see, and Councilwoman Jackson, who is going to be on the Legislative Committee this year, thank you for your willingness to serve. So to the three of you, thank you for representing Salisbury in our statewide organization and the efforts that we have in making our voice heard over, well, statewide, we'll just say that. Into that other territory. Thank you all.
Okay. Let's start over here. Mr. Boda?
Oh. You looked down that way. I hope everybody gets a chance to go and, at the National Folk Festival's website and volunteer looking for backstage support, Bucket Brigade. I saw an email from Dan O'Hare, some guy.
Yeah.
And so please, please, if you've got the time that weekend, please donate one shift, two shifts. I've signed up for, I think, four shifts, so it's going to be a good time.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
Yeah, I'm, I'm the bike valet for the festival. I'm excited about that, like, for a couple of days. That's pretty nice.
You're going to dance with a bike?
Maybe so, maybe so, maybe so. Two things. I know it's a really busy time and, you know, people are going to a lot of outdoor events and things like that. Please get out of the way of our first responders, be mindful of influences in our fire trucks, and be respectful for our city workers who are working on our streets, fixing our lights, picking up our trash. Several times, I've seen some really close situations, and it's just, just be very mindful. And I know it's a, a time of year where people are busy and they've got vacation on their mind or whatever, but please be careful of that. And if you're, if you're healthy enough, please donate blood.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I have a lot to say today.
Oh.
Um, yes, to, to, to say. I just wanted to remind the community, the city, the county, that VFW 10159 will be hosting their third annual Unity Day Saturday, August 14. Food, fun, music, games, and much more. So come out and, and join us. It's from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The mayor and the entire council will be present, so I'm looking forward to that. And also, the Wacomico County Health Department will be hosting a vaccination clinic that day as well, from 11:00 to 2:00. And I also would like to say, last but not least, congratulations to Calvin J. Mitchell, Sr. of the VFW 10159 in Salisbury. He was presented the Purple Heart after 50 years Saturday by Charles County, Maryland.
That's great.
So congratulations, Calvin. Thank you. Oh, and don't forget to get your vaccinations. There'll be no excuses because you will be right at the VFW from 11:00 to 2:00. So I don't want to hear any excuses why no one's gotten them because they're bringing it to your community. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Michelle?
Yeah, just piggyback, yes, please go get your COVID vaccination. But in other vaccination news, the Wacomico County Health Department is putting together clinics for the month of August, all the way through September and to October for schoolchildren to get their, all their immunizations up to date because school is coming back. So they have posted on their social media, you can see the dates, but the next one is going to be August 17th from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the Health Center on West Carroll Street. So if you have little kids and they need their immunizations up to date, you can go check on their social media, on their Facebook page, and they've got all the info there. And they have flyers in multiple languages.
Thank you, Michelle. I just want to say to Mr. Boda that I am doing four shifts driving. I don't know what I'm driving, but I'm driving something. I don't think it's a bus this year. I think it's going to be.
I'm on Bucket Brigade, so that's where the.
You're on Bucket Brigade?
Bucket Brigade, that's where the party's at.
So we got bucket, valet.
Backstage support?
Be backstage. Okay. I think we're, we're all going to be busy.
Man, I'm sorry. I forgot one thing.
One thing?
Once you, yeah, if I may, once you have filled your belly at VFW's Unity Day and had a good time that afternoon, for, for those who wish to express an observation or an experience with police or the criminal justice system, the Criminal Justice Reform Task Force will be meeting at the Truitt Street Community Center at 2:00 p.m.
Two to four.
Two, two to four, two to four. So it's about, you know, 30 minutes of introduction stuff and then 90 minutes of time for people to be heard who are not appointed to the task force and who have a story to tell or, you know, have an idea about improvement, something to share with the task force. The task force, we've extended their deadline, so they have now about three months left before those recommendations should be delivered. Once we've received those, we'll be sharing this with you all in publicly. So we've got not much time left. So now's the time to share.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, thank you, everyone. It's great to be back all together. It's, Zoom was nice for, and served a very good purpose, but it's nice to be back together. So thank you, thank you, everyone, and we'll see you next week at Work Session. And with that, everybody, we are adjourned.